Stage two drought update. Mr. Hagmark, I think we've seen you most of all, of any staff member, except for maybe Mr. Armstrong sitting right there, but welcome back.
I'll take that as a compliment.
It's a good thing.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Joshua Hagmark. I'm the Acting Water Resources Manager. I'm here today to give another update on the current drought situation. To start off my overview, we have, I'm going to talk a little bit about our water supply outlook, talk about some tools for influencing water use, supplemental water, where we stand with our procurement of supplemental water, drought response, capital projects, and our conservation efforts. I do have to say, I have Madeline Ward with me today, the Acting Conservation Specialist, so she'll be here to walk you through the conservation efforts. So I want to start off with talking a little about El Nino cycle. I seem to be getting a lot of questions from the public, and other coworkers are as well, and so I assumed you might be receiving some similar comments. El Nino does not necessarily equate to increased rainfall. It's been one of the things people are like, oh, we don't need to worry about conserving. They're predicting El Nino for next year. And I just wanted to take a little of the time to talk a little about that because that is, there's not a correlation at this point between if you get an El Nino, you will get rain. That's not, that's not what the experts are saying on this. If we do get rain, El Nino will, has shown to increase the amount of rainfall. The challenge with the last few years, and the reason it's been unprecedentedly dry, is because we've had a high pressure sitting off the coast pushing the storms around us. So whether we have an El Nino or not, if the storms aren't coming through, there is no rainfall to help improve the situation. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, and we can cut down on some of the questions I keep getting about that. And I think we have to hope for the best and prepare for the worst is kind of the motto here, and that's where I'm taking you today. So here's our current supply strategy, which I show every, every month here, and we're focused on year three, 2014 is where we are now. We have been challenged by some of our groundwater wells, and I'll be talking about that a little later in the program. So you're seeing some supplemental water programmed for this year, about 300 acre feet that we're planning to use this year. Our conservation, extraordinary conservation that we're looking for, as you heard a week ago, we are challenged, the public is being challenged by meeting that goal. We're hopeful that the rates going into effect in July for water use in June will help, help people to meet that goal. Let's see, I'll talk a little bit more about later in my presentation about the supplemental waters as well. So monthly demands, as I reported a few weeks ago, the data came in for May, and it was unfortunate, but the data showed that water usage matched what we would expect in a normal year. What I kind of wanted to share with the council in this presentation is I included the gray bar there. The gray illustrates last year's water usage. And I think what's important, if you look at March, April, and May, if I compare last year's water usage to this year's water usage, the community is making progress. If we look at March, it was 20% below last year's water usage. For April, it was like 10, and for May, it was 5%. The challenge is, we are in an unprecedentedly dry situation, and our current target is to get 20% below our normal water usage. And you can kind of see, it kind of bounces around with last year's water usage, and that's why we didn't come out and say we want to be 30% below last year's water usage. Our water planning, our predictions, were all based on some normalized usage, which is a running average of the city's water usage. And so that's why when we're talking about the need, it's getting 20% below that. And I know that can be kind of confusing. People's water bills show their water usage from last year. And so on their bills, people may, hey, I'm making progress, and that may be true. But we're asking, this is extraordinary times, we're asking people to look and see how that water usage, are they really truly making headway versus their, their normal usage? And if they have questions, we're more than happy to entertain those questions, call our hotline, or visit us on the web. So if they're, in summary here, what I kind of wanted to do is, is kind of talk about the, the space between the normalized water usage and the red line, so the dotted green line and the red line there, that percentage of savings so far equates to approximately 164 acre feet is what has been saved so far. Our goal at this time was approximately 700 acre feet. So we're 500, 550 acre feet shy of our goal. But I'm hopeful with continued communication, the rates going into effect, we will start to see some change in usage, and we have our biggest opportunity for change coming into these months when our water usage is so high. This graphic here shows just where the water is used. I often, talking to folks, they talk about, well, it's the other guy who's the problem. And what I kind of wanted to point out here, as much water as folks, we do use in, in our parks and recreation and schools, it is a small, small percentage of the overall city's water usage. And really, where the water is, is in the single-family residential homes. That's where this community can save the most amount of water. This year, our target is to save 1,000 acre feet, and that is, that is where we hope most of that savings will come from as we move forward. So it's tools for influencing water usage, aside from conservation, which is obviously a huge tool that we use. We have regulations, which we were adopted, the stage two regulations on May 20th, rates, which were adopted on June 17th and take effect July 1st, and penalties, which some agencies have already implemented, but we wanted to bring those up and talk a little about those today. So the purpose for the penalties would be to address the high-water users in the community. And currently, the attorneys of office is investigating the legal requirements for that. And what we intend to do is come back and do more of a formal presentation as part of the drought update next time around. And we'll walk, walk through what that process would look like and the timing. In general, we don't see the penalties being, being implemented any earlier than September, but we're working on that process, and we'll bring that back to you for more discussion. We're also working on a framework for who, who might these rates target, and how much of an impact it would actually make. And so we hope to come back to both Water Commission and Council and get some feedback and input on that before getting any, getting too far along with that. So supplemental water, I think I've reported before, we do have 1,148 acres of secured water from Vandenberg. We are currently under contract with Biggs West Gridley for 1,300 acre feet. That water will be delivered in July, August, and September. So come October, we should know what our full tally is of that percentage. Unsecured, but we're in discussion on is Mojave Water Agency has water in San Luis Reservoir that they have put up for a unbalanced exchange. And so Montecito, Lacumbre Water District, and ourselves are interested in, it's around 1,000 acre feet, so when you split it out, it's about 500 for, for the city. Still, still in negotiations on that. I don't have a lot of details, but once I do, I will bring that back. And if that does go through, that could be moved up into the secured.
Can you define unbalanced water exchange?
Oh, absolutely. Madam Mayor, the unbalanced water exchanges, we would, Mojave is interested in giving us one gallon of water. We have to pay them back two and a quarter gallons of water within a, right now, the discussion is a 10-year period in which we would return that water. And so in a typical year, water is about $250, $280 an acre foot. We could use, if we have full reservoirs, we could use our Table A, our state water allocation to repay that. There are several ways that we could repay that, but we definitely would keep it out at a 10-year repayment. I don't think we'd want to repay it any sooner than that. I think that'd be too.
In other words, repay it when it costs less than today, for example?
Absolutely, absolutely. And Mojave is all about banking water, so they have a lot of groundwater banking, and so this is how they kind of keep moving water around. And then, of course, we have our banked water at Dudley Ridge. That's water that we've stored there and could have returned, and we're working on the terms of that return. Lake Kachuma entitlement, there are some questions about what was happening with Lake Kachuma, and right now, I am happy to say there is consensus amongst all the water agencies along the South Coast that we will be taking a 55% reduction in our water year 15 allocation. That allocation is typically, for the city, it's 8,277 acre feet. So for us, it'll be a little over 3,700 acre feet for next year. And that is already factored into the supply strategy that I shared with you initially. Drought Response Capital Projects, I want to be going through recycled water system, groundwater projects, desalination plant, and the comb pumping project. So the tertiary treatment plant, it is under construction, and scheduled is still to be online by the summer of 2015. We are making progress with the Valverde Well, that was a, in a groundwater basin we currently do not pump from. It has some difficult water, and so a good candidate to put it into our recycled water system. That project is supposed to be producing water by October, and it looks to be about 300 acre feet a year, which to put it in perspective, our recycled water demand is about 1,100 acre feet a year. 300, that is the plant itself. The wastewater treatment plant uses recycled water for a lot of its process cleaning. And so we are working on a project to reduce that by 300 acre feet, which would get us down to a 900 acre foot demand of the recycled water system. With Valverde online, that would reduce that discrepancy to 600 acre feet until we can get the tertiary treatment plant online.
We have a question. Ms. Mario.
Is there any way to speed up the project on the tertiary treatment plant? It seems like if we had that supply online faster, that it would help a lot.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, yes, we were very interested in speeding that up. We put some pretty good incentive clauses in there for the contractor to finish early. So we've expedited a lot of the, we tried to organize that construction so it moves pretty quickly. The real driver in there is the procurement of some of these, of the pieces of equipment, and so that's kind of the driver. But we've, we've got an incentive clause in there. We feel like we've pushed this project as fast as it can, and so I think we're looking to, the bulk of our water for recycled is used in the summer, so our target is to, to be up and running by then.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
So how does the plumbing work for the Valverde Well? Do you just plug that into the reclaimed system with extra pumps? Is that, and it charges the system from a different location than the treatment plant?
Right. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's exactly right. We're very fortunate, there is already a recycled water main that runs out to the Hidden Valley area, right in front of this well. And so we'll be able to tie that in with just pretty minimal construction there, and feed, backfeed the zone from the top, which will really help out, I think, for just in general operations, help out with feeding the eelings and the golf course.
Right. Thank you.
So groundwater project highlights, I just put this on here in case you guys have any questions about wells. We do have a lot of different projects going on with wells. We continue to be inspecting and maintaining a lot of our wells, trying to maximize the production out of those. Alameda Wells, you know, we've, moving forward with design on that, we have located a site, and we're working with parks, so we've now defined exactly where the new well would go. So we're going to be moving forward with creating some drawings and moving forward with the findings necessary to move forward with construction on that. The goal with that project is to be in production by next summer. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, we're hoping to keep. Ice School Well, for those who may not be familiar with the history, this was drilled about 10 years ago, really difficult water quality, unfortunately, lots of H2S, and, and the production out of it was about 300, 400 acre feet a year. And the challenge with that was really to deal with that water, it needed a treatment plant, or it needed to be piped to the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant, which had about a three-quarters of a million dollar price tag on it, which at the time, not being in a drought, it was a low, lower priority. We're now looking at it, we're conducting water quality testing, we're wondering if we pump this well, a couple of things. We wonder if we pump this well at a lower pumping rate, could we put it right into the system? Sometimes when you pump wells at different rates, you pull out less of the H2S that might be trapped in the groundwater. So we're going to look and see if there's a simple solution where we can tie it right in and not have to do a lot of treatment. However, if we're finding that that's not going to be possible, we are also moving forward with the design to pipe that water down to the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant. The Veracruz Well is currently in operation. I haven't actually received any complaints. We are running it through the filters twice because the H2S is so high from that well, but we are getting production out of it, and that is going in the system. And I've been really impressed with the, the treatment of the plant because it's some pretty poor quality water coming out of the ground. So I think we're just making some good headway on that. And the City Hall Well, you might have saw the last Tuesday, unfortunate timing with that, last Tuesday, we had part of the parking lot closed so we could pull this well. We did have a failure of this well. We're still investigating why it failed. There's more work that still needs to be done. This, at this point, we believe this is under warranty. This is one of the wells that was just recently installed, the pump was, and so we're going to get to the bottom of that and get some answers so we can get this thing back online as soon as possible.
Mr. Hart, go ahead.
Just going back just a second, you, you mentioned the, the quality of the Veracruz. How is that compared to the High School Well quality? Are they comparable, or one worse than the other?
Councilmember Hart, very comparable water.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the workaround with the additional?
Ultimately, you know, to say it, it meets all, we can get it to meet all primary drinking water standards. It's safe to drink, it's just secondary standards such as odor and things are kind of offensive, and we're trying to deal with those so we, we don't have any issues.
So the workaround that you're doing to improve the quality by running it through the filtration plant twice, will that be affected? If you, if you have this additional quantity coming from Veracruz, is that going to mess up that approach? Will that still be effective?
It's certainly going to be challenging. The, the key has been in the past to mix it. So when we had City Hall, City Hall happens to have some decent water quality, so it was great. We'd just mix it with Veracruz, and it would allow us to go through the treatment process once. Because it's just Veracruz water, we're having to actually go through the filters twice to make sure we can really cut down that H2S.
It really depends on the City Hall Well as, as well.
Yes. And that, and we're, I didn't have it on here because there really isn't any new news, but the Corp Yard Well, that's one that we drilled last year, and we're placing the pump right now and trying to get that online. That, the initial testing shows that, that water's going to be really high quality.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just wanted to start off with just the general timing of D-SAL and where we are. We have, we are in year three. We had just awarded the pre-design contract. We are working through that contract. Our goal is to be prepared to award a contract in, by April of 2015, should conditions continue. On that timeline, the desalination facility should come on sometime in mid to late 2016, which would meet our critical demand in year 2017. So with the desalination plant, with the coastal development permit, we had some fairly good news last week. We received a letter from the Coastal Commission recognizing the existence of our current coastal development permit, and kind of laying out some steps for what we need as we move through this process of reactivation. Basically, we need to get an amendment or a permit specifically for the, the act of placing our equipment back in the ocean, which is a fairly straightforward permit as we understand, talking to Coastal Commission staff. So we're working with putting together what exactly would be involved in the action of placing that equipment, and we'll be getting that to, hopefully, to Coastal Commission staff later in July. The NPDS permit renewal, as we talked to-
Question, please?
Mm-hmm.
So didn't that letter also refer to a policy report that's coming out soon? What's it called, Mr. Hagmark? The Ocean Plan Policy, which may challenge the, the way we do our intake on the D-SAL plant?
Now, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rio, Rio, the, that's exactly what falls into the NPDS permit. So the changes that are underway is, the state is, State Water Resource Control Board is amending the Ocean Plan to now, instead of just focusing on discharge, which is, at this point, has been related to our NPDS permit for El Estero Wastewater Treatment Plant, which included discharge of brine. It's, they're expanding that permit now to include intakes for desalination facilities. And we met with staff this week. We have not seen a copy, but the staff at the Regional Water Quality Control Board have seen a copy of the draft comments, or draft Ocean Plan Amendment changes. And we're generally just talking about the timing because our permit for NPDS permit expires in May of 2015. And so we are going to be working to put together the information that they're going to be, need to, to, at this point, we're all kind of guessing, but at this point, what they, we think they're going to need in order to give us a new, a renewal, permit renewal. So at this point, I wanted to let the council know, next week, we will be bringing a contract for legal support on the NPDS, just because there are so many, we do this every five years, but there's so many variables associated with this permit renewal that we are looking to have a firm who's familiar with these renewals help us out, particularly given the, the D-SAL component. Consultant progress, I just want to take a little time to talk about the ocean intake facility. It's often referred to, and I have referred to it as an open ocean intake. This is not a pipe, it's just open pipe in the, in the ocean. It, it is actually a screened facility. The technology that we are looking at right now is called wedge wire screen technology. It has been used at several other facilities as kind of a pilot to see how it works, and it has been very successful. This facility keeps fish from getting, larger fish from getting sucked into the pipe, and it also, the velocities through this screen are so low that fish can escape, easily escape the, the intake velocities. So it's really important, this, this mesh is 0.5 millimeters, it's a really tight mesh, probably equivalent to a screen on your screen windows. It's a really tight mesh meant to keep the bulk of marine life out of, out of the pumps and out of the D-SAL facility. So I just want to talk about a little of that. I've had quite a few questions from the public, well, why is this just big open pipe? Why don't you put something on the end? Yes, we certainly are planning to put something on the end. We certainly are, it's important that we protect the marine environment. As far as landside-
Ms. Mario has a question.
You're characterizing the screen as very successful. Are you going to provide to us some reports or evidence of that? I mean, I've heard the, the other way, that you can screen it, but it's still going to destroy some of the marine life, that some of them are going to get sucked through there. So I'm very concerned about seeing evidence of what you're saying, okay?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rio, we are planning to do an update to council on the status of the pre-design work in September. And with that, we'll have the design engineers here to talk about that and the studies that have been done. Again, we're going to be implementing this in compliance with state conditions or state requirements on this. So the, the, we can talk some more about what the screens do and don't do.
Well, September seems a little ways away. Can you make it sooner?
I think you'll have the information you need to give an accurate report by then. Is that-
Okay, we should have our, you know, we should be talking about it and focusing on it before September. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure when that could be, considering we're off for three weeks in August, and to get the information you want, Ms. Mario, I think we need the people, the experts involved with the details in order to provide the information. And we're not making any decision on a contract with D-SAL plant until next spring, if, depending on what happens with, in the winter. So I want to hear the information too, but I just don't want to have a meeting just for, just by, just to have a meeting with inadequate information, so.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
As far as landside activities, we continue to, to move forward with evaluation of the whole electrical system, what modules will be, needed to be placed in, on the facility. We're looking to get a rough cost estimate by the end of July, and so I'll be working with that information. One of the things that we'll be coming back to council with is a contract with RefTelus again. They were our rate model firm, and we'll be coming back with a contract to take that data from the costs of D-SAL, so that in September, my goal is to present a, a range of costs that we might see for our low, average, and, and high users, how those costs of implementing D-SAL might impact our, our rate pairs. So as I mentioned, update coming in September, looking to support the rates for that. And the key for this, this is an interesting one, where we got to get these rates in place because part of the, the, the rate structure needs to finance the desalination facility. So if we want to award a contract, or want the opportunity to award a contract in April, we need to have a rate structure that's in place. At this point, we're, we're working on the details, but we're thinking a rate structure that's in place by possibly February. So backing that out, we got a lot of work to do in, in developing those, that rate structure that will support D-SAL, and also doing the 218 noticing and, and going through all the public hearings. So we're building that schedule right now, and we, we hope to share that with you next go-around, what that's going to kind of look like. And then, as I mentioned, headed towards a release of the proposal for the design build.
Excuse me if I could, just a moment. When you do that rate structure, could we call out as a line item, D-SAL escalation or something? In other words, so people don't just see a big hit on their bill, but see specifically what part is going towards the coming D-SAL plan?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Huchkis, this increase at this time, we're still looking at it, but will be all D-SAL. That's what the increase will be, because Prop 218 requires that the increase all be associated with the cost of service. And so at this point, the cost of service, the significant cost in service will be D-SAL. And so one of the things that we'll be looking for input from Water Commission and Council is part of that, there's a capital component of D-SAL, and then there's an operational cost. And we, we'd like to talk a lot about that, the capital cost being close to $30 million, but what quickly dwarfs that is the actual operational cost. And so that's why I hope to bring back a lot of those numbers and boil that down to what, what it's going to mean to our, our, our rate pairs.
I was just thinking from the public's point of view, for support for this, that we would be successful, or more successful, if we could say, hey, this chunk of your dollars is going for this specific purpose.
We have another, other questions, Mr. Hart, and then Mr. White.
So I just want to make sure I understood. You, you're anticipating that we're going to have to raise rates before we make the decision to go forward with the D-SAL plant in order to keep the option open that we could make the decision about the D-SAL plant?
Councilmember Hart, yeah, there's quite a few critical steps as we move forward with this. Yeah, last year, it was the NOAA predictions. We're pretty good about predicting how dry it was going to be, but we're going to get to a point where we're certainly going to have to be talking about rate increases and, and noticing the public. We may not increase it. That will try to push it off as long as we can, but at some point, we're going to need to implement the rates so that they will allow us to secure the funding in order to award the contract. And so it is going to be a, a pretty active conversation. We're going to be looking a lot at what the weather predictions are. We should have a pretty good idea of where we are come January next year, if it was, if it looked anything like this year.
And just to kind of clarify how it works is, we expect that we will have to borrow money to build the desalinization plant, and that means we'll either borrow money from the state through the revolving loan fund, or through selling bonds. And in either of those cases, the people who are, we're going to borrow the money from are going to want to make sure that we have the revenue to then make the payments. And so what we anticipate is, is we have, because of the Prop 218 noticing and everything, we'll need to have those rates ready, already approved by the city council and ready to go before we sell the bonds or borrow the money. Now, the idea would be, we will wait to the last possible moment, but we want to make sure that you've already approved them, so if we then have to award that contract. And so the timing, obviously, we don't want to raise rates if we don't have to, but we also need to make sure that we don't get in a situation where we sell bonds, and then you haven't done the final approval, that could be subject to a challenge before that happens, because then we wouldn't be able to sell the bonds. So that's that, the, the timing of it.
Well, that's really helpful. That, that explains it much better. The, so there is a scenario where we- The, um, so, there is a scenario where we raise the rates, or we give notice to the public, go through the process of having a council hearing to set the rates, but the trigger date for when the rates actually would increase is coincidental with the decision point when we would move forward with the D cell.
That would be our plan.
That's the best case scenario.
Assuming we can get all the legal stuff set.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, there's another piece to it, though, and that is that we are now not in full cost recovery with our rates. And so presumably, that can't last very long. And that even if we were to implement, um, only a portion that's going to, and I think it speaks to Mr. Hotchkiss's questions too, where there's a piece of this, which will, which will just be, we're, we're accomplishing full cost recovery next year, whereas we're actually, might call it deficit spending, we're going into reserves this year with our rate structure. And we can't do that, uh, anymore. So that would be a piece of it, that would be different than the D cell piece. And that would be, we might be able to separate that out and, and show that as, as we contemplate how we're financing, uh, the system next year.
Well, and to follow up on that, I think also, if we sell the bonds to, to build the D cell plant, to rebuild the D cell plant, we rebuild the D cell plant and then it rains, and we don't need to operate the D cell plant, we still have to pay the bonds back. So, so I, I like the idea of, uh, on the billing statement and the water statement, to have a line item about D cell capital and maybe even D cell operational. So, you know, a year later, let's say, the D cell plant's not in operations, they're wondering, well, why are my water rates so high still? Well, it's because we had to rebuild it, and yay, it rained, that's good news, so you're not paying more for the operating of the D cell plant. But I think that's been part of the challenge we've had this time around, about, you know, why are you waiting so long for the D cell plant? And when they, if they actually see every month the dollars that they're spending, that's just for the, uh, capital part of the D cell plant, it's that part of that constant education that, that you were talking about before. I mean, that's all logistics on how it looks on your water bill, but, um, but I appreciate the, the thought process behind that. Yeah, thanks.
One of the things, just to kind of add to the discussion, um, you know, a lot of folks talk about, we'll turn it on so we can get past, we don't have to deal with this drought, and that this, the desalination facility will not end the drought. It will still require conservation. It is not a solution that will, we can all return to using our 14,000 acre feet a year. This, it will still require discipline and extraordinary conservation, even when that facility is operating in these current conditions. So, and just wanted to cap on the, recap on the comb pumping project, uh, they're moving forward quickly on that project. They had a significant shutdown last week of the, um, comb pipeline, uh, in order to make some, uh, significant changes to the intake structure. The water is now moving again through that facility, it was successful, they finished it on Sunday. The cost for the whole project right now is 6.1 million, and that includes operation of the facility through February of 2015. The city's portion is 2.2 million. And I think the update that I wanted to share with you is, we are seeking grant funding. There's two possible funding sources. One is through the IRWIMP, or Integrated Regional Water Management Program. And the other one is, um, the California Department of Public Health has a, um, grant available as well. So, we're pursuing both of those, hoping to try and minimize our expenses on, on this emergency project. So at this point, I will turn it over to Madeline.
Uh, Mr. Hart has a question first.
There was also an article in the news press this morning about undercharging for, um, water services and the potential liability that is for all the customers. Is that, that must be news to you as well, and, um, can you give us some more information about that?
Thank you, Councilmember Hart, for bringing that up. I hadn't done it in my presentation, so I skipped over it, I meant to talk to you about it. Uh, the CCWA was, uh, put on notice by the Department of Water Resources that they have been undercharging for transportation costs associated with water. And, oh, by the way, CCWA, we'd like $7 million from you for costs related to last year and this year. Uh, the city's portion of that, we pay 7% of those costs, is approximately 500,000, that would be our share. Um, I don't have much more details than what was in the paper. I'm looking forward to, um, our CCWA meeting next week, where hopefully we can dig into some more details about that.
Well, that share, that percentage share is very helpful. I had, had no, I was looking at this share of the, the 2.2 million out of the $6 million cost, and was imagining a similar ratio for this cost, so it's a much better scenario with, at a $500,000 cost than a 2.5 or the $3 million cost.
And to put that into context too, uh, our, right now, our, uh, annual cost for state water is about $4 million, and a large part of that is the capital cost of the South Coast branch that had to be put in, and that, payments for that will be done in, uh, 2023, I believe, and then that payment will drop. But it'd be 500,000 in, in respect to our 4 million that we're paying them on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
You know, just to put this in perspective, as long as I've been the city's representative on the Central Coast Water Authority, we have had repeated problems with accounting at the Department of Water Resources. Uh, it's mind boggling to me that a state agency could be that far off this consistently. Uh, but this is nothing new. Undercharges, overcharges, this is very, very typical.
Feel better, or? Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
There have been some undercharges too, we didn't talk about those.
Oh, okay, all right. Did we get a rebate? Is that?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, well, okay. All right, please continue.
Madam Mayor, council, members of the council, my name's Madeline Ward, I'm the Acting Water Conservation Coordinator. And at the end of our drought updates, we usually have a couple slides about conservation, so I look forward to giving to the, those to you. Uh, what we're mainly focusing on right now, on top of our regular conservation efforts, is working with large landscapes. So we're working with property managers, HOAs, and multi-housing, as well as the landscapers that are in charge of those sites, to work out a plan where everyone can have a water budget that they're following, that they make irrigation repairs, that they know we are here to help them with rebates and with, um, irrigation evaluations. We also are giving a lot of presentations to community groups. Um, we have trainings where we are working with, uh, different manufacturers here in town, or with nonprofits, and holding workshops about water-wise landscaping, about irrigation, so that people have those education, um, opportunities available to them. We also have additional hourly staff. As you can imagine, our phones have been ringing off the hook, which is something that we love, but, um, we need more people to answer the phones. So we have an increased call volume, we have, uh, much higher demand for water checkups and for rebates. Also, um, we have distributed these table tents that you can see on the screen and that you'll be seeing around town here, and we've distributed over 3,000 of those to local restaurants. The county also just placed an order, so you'll be seeing them in other places throughout the county. But, um, here in the city, we've done 3,000, as well as the drought notices that are now required in restaurants. Also, in terms of lodging, we've distributed about 750 towel and linen cards, as well as drought notices to hotels. And just to give you a perspective of how much, um, the increase has been in our rebate, is last year, February through June, we had 55 pre-inspections, and this year, in the same time period, it tripled to 160. And the rebate now covers, um, permeable landscaping materials such as cobblestones or artificial turf. So we've seen an increase in demand since we've expanded the program. We also are covering, uh, pool covers, since we're now, um, requiring those as of Stage Two Water Use Regulations. So that's just a quick update on what we've been doing the past month. Um, with our increased staff, we'll be able to shorten the wait time right now for water checkups and pre-inspections, because we're booked out about a month since we have such a high demand. And of course, we're here on the website, and, um, also, we've been getting a lot of phone calls in and reports on waste of water, which we always welcome. We ask that people take pictures of those and send them in to us so that we can help enforce that. We've been having, um, I think since February, we've had 300, uh, complaints called in of waste of water, so we are happy to go out and talk to people about it.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, did you have a?
Yeah, I do actually have a question. So, explain to me how the rebate program works in relation to folks who are conserving water now? Like, say, because isn't there a relationship between how much, you know, what you're replacing? Do you have to have an active lawn? I guess is essentially what I'm asking. You know, we go down a few months, folks have turned off their water, their lawns are dead, they decide that, that this point now, they're going to make the investment, and they're going to take out their lawn and replace it, and they're looking to take advantage of the rebate program. Is that going to cause a problem for them when they come to do that, if their lawn is dead?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's a great question. What we do is, we actually look back at five years of water usage, so if someone watered their lawn consistently at any point in those five years, we can look back and see, okay, maybe last year you stopped watering your lawn, but you will still be approved for the rebate. But again, it, it does cover hi, high water-using landscapes, so if you've always had water-wise plants and, um, you've never watered them consistently, then it's generally not something that would be eligible. Maybe you had water-wise plants with spray irrigation, which isn't efficient, then it would just cover new drip irrigation that is more efficient, but not the plants. So it's really replacing things that are currently high water-using, even if you stopped watering your lawn, it would still be eligible.
Okay, good, thank you, that's really helpful.
Mr. White.
Uh, thank you. How do we get a picture to, uh, you folks? Um, in other words, there's email, or text, can we, is there, I mean, how do we do that?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we have a email, a group email, that's, that we'll put on the slide for the future, which is W conservation@santabarborca.gov. So, water conservation, but water conservation's much longer, so it's W conservation. And, uh, pictures really help, because it'll tell us the date and the time, and, um, then we have proof to show property owners, who generally aren't aware that their sprinklers are spraying in the middle of the day or running down the street, so it really helps to show pictures.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have some public comment speakers, and, uh, why don't we go with Phil Walker? And I think Mr. Shankman left, but Mr. Walker, come on up.
If, if Councilman Hotchkiss wanted to beat me, you, you can have my time, if you want. Okay. Um, City Resources Staff, Mr. Hogomark and Ms. Ward gave an excellent update. Um, think, thinking back, okay, drought can be three years, 30, it can be 300, so, you know, this might be a moot point a few months from now. The way I read the El Nino, uh, Dr. Patzert of JPL, a very noted meteorologist, follow, follow him, he had, they have a lot of articles in the LA Times about him and his prognostications. If, if I happen to go off the beach, uh, Jason Stern's Wharf and see, feel 80, 82, 84 degree water, you see the barracuda, the marlin, the yellowtail swimming out there, I'll go with a heavy, heavy rain here. If I don't feel that water temp increase in the ocean, uh-oh. Okay, one other quick thing, you know, I'm, I'm firmly see a need, uh, I think the entities to the east, the Montecito Water District, see a need for the D cell plant if and necessary, you know? And there's such a symbiotic relationship, I've lived on the east side, good 40 years over there, between the working people on the east side and the maintenance of estates, landscape, and other things, construction on, in Montecito proper, that economically, water is, or the lack thereof, is making it difficult on people, especially people on the east side. I'm getting little feedback here and there. And hopefully, uh, a, a working agreement can be fleshed out with, especially the Montecito Water District, when and if the D cell plant gets, uh, put more into the, into fruition. Thank you very much.
And Kira Redman?
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, Kira Redman with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. Just had a couple quick comments on the D cell option. Aside from being an extremely expensive and energy-intensive water supply option, as you know, it also has significant environmental impacts. Um, as you know, Santa Barbara's D cell plant uses an open water-screened intake, or will. Um, and these types of, um, technologies, basically fish and other marine organisms get killed on the intake screens, that's called impingement. And organisms that are small enough to pass through, such as plankton, fish eggs, and larvae, are killed during the process, the processing of the saltwater, which is called entrainment. Um, there are, however, several operational design and technol, technological measures available to reduce the marine impacts of D cell. In particular, subsurface intakes can virtually eliminate impingement and entrainment. Um, as was mentioned earlier, there is an imminent amendment to the California Ocean Plan, which will likely, um, require these types of less environmentally harmful technologies. Um, so, Channel Keeper, just to let you know, we'll be tracking and weighing in on this process, and we'll be advocating for other, less expensive and less environmentally harmful, harmful, um, water supply alternatives before the city resorts to D cell. And if you do decide to go that route, um, we will be urging you to undertake the most, the best available and least environmentally harmful technologies moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Shankman?
How water conservation is being managed, based on my observance, observations, have, um, led to me is some discrepancy. We have a history where we have put fresh groundwater telling the public that it's been reclaimed, and it, the whole time, when it wasn't reclaimed. Now, we're adopting a policy to turn off fountains, ruining the construction of these vehicles to run water. In the process, to save water, and even during times of blight, we would always have a water fountain running for, you know, to attract the birds, that eat the bugs, that cause diseases and what have you. And that a reevaluation in our policy, if we're going to stop water, lawn, or what have you, to keep the water fountains going in the process. Anybody have any questions to what I was just said? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council, if there are any other comments, Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, um, thank staff, or, as Grant House would say, appreciate staff for, um, working so hard on our drought issue. Um, I am concerned about the D cell plant as well. And before we talk about bonds and, um, going out for proposals for design, um, we really should make a decision about the intake. And I share the concerns of, um, one of our, our public speakers. Um, back in the 50s, when Bradbury Dam was built to create Lake Kachuma, there was a drought, and there was such an emergency, uh, and arguments were made not to build a fish ladder on Bradbury Dam. And there's not a fish ladder on it, when fish ladders had been built on dams for, um, ever since dams were built, because people knew the fish travel up and down. I think I read that there was a fish ladder built on the dam, you know, early 1900s, late 1800s. So, that Steelhead Trout Fishery is essentially destroyed on the San Inez River. And regionally, it has impacts for us, the city of Lompoc, it, every, uh, person and community along the river now doesn't have that, um, natural resource. So here we are now, in our, our drought, and there's urgency, and I just would hope we don't make the mistake of doing, of building a, a, a desalination plant that harms, uh, marine life, e, even though there's momentum. So, um, I appreciate the situation we're in, but if you look long-term, you know, it will rain again, and I just hope that we make the right decision for, um, for the ocean environment. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The desalination plant has been part of the city's water plans for decades. Uh, and given the fact that we don't have any other available sources of water, if the drought continues, then I feel pretty certain that we will use desalination. I think the concerns...
I think the concerns about the effect on marine life of this 36-inch screened pipe have been vastly overestimated. And obviously, I mean, if we could, if we could work it in such a way that the intake pipe only brought in water, that would be ideal. That's what we would like. We can't do that. Even with the best screens, there'll still be some, some fish larvae and some other microorganisms dragged in. But I think, I think we'll see, when we have more information on this, that the amount of marine life we're talking about is infinitesimally small, and the benefit to the city is correspondingly huge. So I don't think it's going to be a problem. I don't think anyone will have any environmental concerns about this if we actually come to do it. But we'll have more evidence about that later.
Well, I'm looking forward to that evidence.
You'll get it.
Right. And I, I know your position, and I just, I, you know, they've been looking at the screens that take in water on these nuclear power plants, and I, I think we need to do our research on the environmental impacts. Thank you.
Mr. Hodgkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just Mr. Hagmark. This may be a little bit unfair, but in the news press, there was a rather extensive article about the success of Montecito in conservation. And I've said to people who've asked me to ask, because they had more fat on the bone, as it were, because we had done more of our homework in conserving here prior to this drought than Montecito. Am I correct, or is there additional matter, matters here that affect their current success?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgkiss, yeah, we're closely with Montecito Water. In fact, we produce and treat a lot of their water for them. Their community is fairly small compared to the city of Santa Barbara. They're about 10,000 people. We're over 90,000. They use half the water the city uses for that, a tenth of the population.
Their 10,000 uses half the water that our 90,000 uses?
That's correct. And so in that, obviously, there is a significant amount of additional water. They, there's a lot of, they have large estates, and there's a lot of watering there, either right or wrong. There is a lot of room for improvement, and they do not have the aggressive conservation program that we, we have here. And I think that has allowed them to see some pretty big savings. Now, the challenge that I think they're going to have is twofold. That comparison is to last year, not a normalized year. So that kind of gets them a little bit of a boost in looking even better. But sustaining that, I don't know how committed people are to letting their landscape go there, and I think that's what they're going to be kind of challenged with. And they've also got some really steep penalties put in there. I mean, people are paying, I think are, they're paying $35 in HCF, and we're up to $11 for our most expensive water. So they've got some pretty big fines in there to drive down their penalties, to drive down their water usage.
Well, hats off to them for whatever they can do. I'm glad they've done what they've done so far, and let's hope it continues. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, to frame this a little bit, it's three years and two months ago that Kachuma spilled. And we've often spoken about our water supply is when Kachuma spills, we've got five years kind of pretty much in the bag. And maybe we do, but this, the water has dropped, the levels have dropped faster than ever before. And the charts that Mr. Hagmark showed us, that we used more water last year than we expected to, partly in response to, to hotter weather. And what was it, a few days ago, there was an op-ed piece in the, in the New York Times, which was Henry Paulson describing climate change as an issue. And I thought that was interesting, that perhaps a broader spectrum of our nation is looking at climate change as an issue that is, is one that we need to deal with. And I'll make copies of this and share this with, with everyone. But it's, it's definitely at the core of my thoughts here, that next year could be hotter. And, or it's more likely to be hotter even, that in the context of this climate change concern. Also, we've been talking about this since the beginning of the year. We've been talking about our, the drought and about water concerns. And yet, we're, and we've set targets for reducing water use, and we're not hitting them. We're not hitting them one after the other, after the other, such that we've saved 150 acre-feet of water, and we were hoping to save 750 acre-feet of water by now. And we're now heading right into the teeth of our biggest water-consuming months. So we haven't made the tools yet. We, it's not like we're, okay, we've got, we've got, we're in the cockpit, and it's, and we're, and we're on target. No, we're still off-target with our water consumption. And this concerns me greatly. And I've discussed in our last update, the concept of penalties. And I think there's a need for penalties. We certainly have high-water users in our city. And is it a tool that will get all the water conservation we need? Perhaps not. But I think it's one of the signals that we need to send, that high-water use is not okay. So, yeah, and I also think it will result in some meaningful conservation. I know we'll be hearing back from our council on this issue soon, and we can discuss that further. Also, I think we missed an opportunity in not having full cost recovery with our, our block rate structure that we just went through the noticing process on. We just are, we were a little cautious there, and I'm, I'm disappointed that we didn't at least have the option to, as the way Prop 218 works, we have the, we have the option to get full cost recovery. And we could have had a steeper block rate structure than we now have, which I believe is the strongest tool for conservation, is when people get a bigger bill, they modify their behavior. And we'll see, we have a modestly changing block rate structure, and hopefully, we'll get some benefits of that. We're going to be depending more on our media to get the word out. This is not a dress rehearsal. We're, that 600 acre-feet that we didn't save, we just paid $600,000 for that water in supplemental, in supplemental purchases. So that's just $600,000 down the proverbial drain that we don't have in our pockets. And I appreciate everybody's comments about, and I think this is on everybody's radar, we don't want to do the D-SAL unless we have to. And that that's something where every, you know, whether, whatever philosophy there is, you go, it's expensive, and we don't want expensive. And so that 600 acre-feet of water is the equivalent of, you know, three weeks of this city's use. So it's three weeks that we lost by not hitting those targets. So I'm hoping that the penalties could be a one tool, perhaps, that will help us jolt back to getting on target for our, for our 20% savings that we're trying to get for the months of June to December. We need something to get it, to make a stronger statement there. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
You point, Councilmember White's point, that Kachuma has dropped faster than we've ever seen before. Is anything equivalent happening to groundwater supplies? Is anybody noticing that the levels are below where they would have been assumed to be? I think I've read somewhere that some of the other neighboring jurisdictions have issues like that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we've pretty defined our, our largest being Storage Unit 1, which this primary base downtown sits over. We are pretty much the, I think we are the only pumper in this basin, and so that basin is looking in really good shape. The Foothill Basin, which we also rely on, this underlies San Roque area, that basin is not in such a good shape. Lucumbre pulls out of that. There is a lot of private wells that pull out of that, and that, we are monitoring that, and that, that well is, the groundwater there is dropping quickly. So we're keeping an eye on that. It probably won't be long before there's a lot of private wells that will go dry.
Okay. And then to Councilmember White's point about the 1,000 acre-feet, or actually, I think you made this point, we need to save 1,000 acre-feet. That was what the goal was for this water year. Can you bring us some information about, you know, customers and where that is breaking out? I think the Montecito Water District is doing very fine-grain analysis of large consumers, you know, compared to the average user. And I think in terms of the penalties that Councilmember White's talking about, we need to know, you know, where, what's, what's going on? Are we finding that there are some large customers who are immune to prices? Obviously, the effects of prices haven't even taken effect yet, so we don't know that. But is there a disproportionate amount of water that's being used by a relatively small number of people, or not people, perhaps institutions? You know, I can't, can't exactly see the same kind of scenario in the city of Santa Barbara that is, the Montecito Water District is struggling with, with large property owners using enormous amounts of water. But I want to make sure that nothing like that's happening, because I think, you know, the question we have to ask is what is the sweet spot with the prices versus conservation? And if people, you know, lots and lots of people are conserving, and they're hitting the 20%, that's important information to know, that other people aren't doing anything. And, and we don't have any data about that. I don't know what you've been generating internally, but I think that's going to be increasingly important for us to understand where the consumers of water are. You know, are they large customers? Are they, everybody is basically not paid attention to the signals we've been sending? And those are completely different answers to the same question. Need to have some more information about that to make these decisions going forward. Thanks.
Thank you again for the update. I'll just add, just in terms of the conversation regarding the D-SAL, and I've said this before, I think there's a short-term and then a longer-term discussion about what this means in terms of our overall water supply. And the issue of an emergency use of the D-SAL plant, and the permitting, and the processing, and the contract is one set of pieces of information. And I look forward to getting that data back, and, you know, when, when we hire the experts that you need to, to move that process forward, and so we can have full knowledge about what it is that we're looking at. But if we're looking at the D-SAL plant as a longer-term use after it rains, for other reasons, that's a big policy decision to make. And I think certainly, a lot of the changes in the regulations are going to require that perhaps some of our intake processes may also have to change if it's for a different type of use than an emergency type of use. And I think that context is important as we figure all this out. So, but again, thank you for constantly keeping us up to date, and I hope people are listening and doing everything they can to conserve what they can. So, Mr. Hart, did you have another question?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.